Will the meeting, please, come to order? A quorum of 175 is present. With your permission, we will waive the reading of the constable's return of the warrant. Welcome to Dover's 2025 Annual Town Meeting. While some of you are still getting to your seats, a few preliminaries. The fire chief reminds us that there is no smoking in the building and no sitting in the aisles or on the stairs. Please turn the ringers off on your cellphones. Non-voters and non-residents are welcome to attend our town meeting, but they should be seated in the area designated to my left, or in the designated area in the cafeteria or gymnasium. Some introductions. I am James Repetti, the moderator for the town of Dover, and in that role, I will oversee tonight's proceedings. On my immediate right is the Board of Selectmen, Robin Hunter, Chair; David Havlin, Member of Board of Selectmen; our Town Administrator, Michael Blanchard; Town Council, Nina Pickering-Cook; the Assistant Moderator, Kate Canny; and the Town Clerk, Felicia Hoffman. On my far right, we have the Warrant Committee, Woody Weiss, Chair; Simone Azvedo; Kevin Baumann; Mies Boudreau; Nina Green; Melissa Herman; Marty Howard; Cam Hudson; Sarah Kudana-Kenny; and Janet McCormick. A few words on procedure and tradition. The beginning of the Blue Book, which I hope you all have with you, summarizes the basic rules for town meeting. But let me emphasize a few key points. Before each article, I will state the subject matter of the article, and then recognize a person to make a motion on the article. The full text of each of these articles is printed in the Blue Book, and in most cases, the Warrant Committee has included a summary of their position on the article in the Blue Book as well. If you did not bring your Blue Book with you tonight, please raise your hand, and a book will be brought to you. We have a hand here. Right down here, Andre. Okay, if we're all set? Okay. Oh, there's two more on the right over here, Andre, far right. Okay. If you wish to discuss a motion, you must be recognized by the moderator before speaking. You will note that there are three microphones in front of the auditorium, at the end of each aisle, and at the middle of the stage. One microphone is marked "yes," and that's for those wishing to speak in support of an article. The microphone marked "no" is for those wishing to speak in opposition to the article, and the microphone in the middle is for those who have questions or who wish to move the question. If you wish to speak, please proceed to one of the microphones. I will alternate among these three microphones. In addition, I appreciate that some may not be able to stand in line. If you are unable to stand in line, please raise your hand if you wish to address town meeting on a particular matter. I will alternate between those standing in line and those who remain seated in proportion to the relative numbers of each. After you are recognized, please identify yourself, as well as your street address, and speak directly into the microphone. The power switch will already be on. It is important to remember that brevity is the soul of wit. I would like to remind all speakers tonight that the longer and more complex your presentation, the greater the chance you will confuse rather than persuade. To save time and allow as many people as possible the opportunity to speak, we limit persons presenting a motion to eight minutes, and comments from the floor to two minutes. Please try to limit your remarks to new facts or new perspectives. Repeating what has already been said is unlikely to help your case, and indeed, may hurt if people are anxious to vote on the question. The Assistant Town Moderator will ring a bell on the stage when you have 30 seconds left, and twice when your two minutes has expired. Limiting comments from the floor to two minutes will provide the maximum opportunity for those who wish to speak to be heard. Couple other points about procedure. Every motion approved tonight can be brought up for reconsideration up to the point that the town meeting is adjourned. Be sure to stay until the end of the meeting. Otherwise, the outcome of your favorite article may be changed, and that has happened in the past. Also, sometimes a citizen will tire of the discussion and make a motion to move the question. If such a motion is made and seconded, we must move to an immediate vote on that motion. All discussion and action on that article is suspended until the motion to move the question is acted upon. If the motion to move the question passes, we then proceed directly to a vote on the main motion without any further discussion. The code of conduct for the tradition of town meeting in Dover has been refined for over 185 years. Too many rules, and our town meeting will become a game only lawyers can play. Too loose, and it will become anarchy. And a further word about our conduct. Disagreement is the essence of democracy. It would be a very boring town meeting if we agreed about everything. But it is imperative that we disagree without being disagreeable. Let us honor the memory of all those who sacrificed to give us this great gift of democracy by conducting ourselves in a professional and collegial manner. Emotional outbursts or accusations directed towards individuals or groups have no place here, and they dishonor the memory of those who sacrificed to give us this great gift of democracy. Before we proceed to the Articles of the Warrant, would you please join me in expressing our thanks to the scores of elected and appointed volunteers who comprise our town government, as well as the able employees who ensure the smooth running of the town? Tonight, I would also like to especially remember Dover citizens who contributed to Dover's governance and passed away since the last annual town meeting. Philip Lutazi, Jean Weiss, and Kathy Weld. We mourn the passing of these neighbors and are grateful for the difference they made in the life of this town. As I mentioned, democracy is a wonderful gift that has been preserved through the sacrifice and effort of millions of our citizens. Let us take a moment to silently recognize those who are putting themselves in harm's way at this very moment in service of our country. A moment of silence, please. Thank you, and may God bless America. I would like to spend a moment now talking about the voting process. Felicia Hoffman, our Town Clerk, has worked very hard with turning technology to organize the distribution of response cards that you were issued as you entered the high school. When we have a vote, you will have 10 seconds to select Key 1, which is also marked "A" for "yes," or Key 2, which is also marked "B" for "no." If your response card does not work during a vote, we ask that you please raise your hand, and an attendant will assist you. We will now test the response cards by considering the following statement. Are the Red Sox going to win the pennant? On my signal, if you think "yes," press "1," or if you think "no," press "2." You may vote now. When you're voting, you'll see a green light flash as you're pressing the button. That means your card is working. And for those who like to vote early and often, remember your last vote registered is the one that counts. Okay, good. We're off to a good start. Did anybody have a problem? Did anybody have one that's not working? Okay, we have one over here. Two, okay. Chris? Chris, there are a couple of ladies here, and also a gentleman down here. Okay, everybody all set? All right. Okay, before we move to the Articles of the Warrant, it is customary to recognize the Chairman of the Warrant Committee for a motion governing the conduct of the meeting. I call upon Mr. Weiss, Chair of the Warrant Committee, to make this customary motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following rule will be adopted for the conduct of this meeting. Any amendment to a main motion that would increase in appropriation must contain a provision for the source of funds for the increase, such that the total amount to be raised and appropriated at the meeting will not be increased.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. This requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on this matter? Okay, hearing none, let's move to a vote. Remember, if you're in favor of the motion, press "1" for "yes." On my signal, if you're opposed, you press "2" for "no." Okay, motion carries 195 to 7. Okay, now, I would like to turn to Robin Hunter, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, who will make a statement describing the state of the town on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Hunter?
Good evening, everyone.
Robin, speak directly into the mic.
I'm trying. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, get it closer. Get it as close as you can.
It's as close as it comes.
Okay, wait a minute. Wait, move the table forward a little bit, so that you'll be able to get it a little closer.
Here we go. All right, we'll try again. How's that? All right. So, I'm going to make a little more than a statement, but not a lot more. So first of all, I thought I would share with all of you the state of the town. Three years ago, we did the same thing, and it was very well received. And when I went back to look at my presentation from three years ago, I found that four of the critical items are still very similar, which was somewhat depressing to me. So, we are currently very understaffed. It's very difficult for us to find qualified candidates. The labor market, especially the municipal labor market, continues to be very competitive. Our next challenge is, well, this is one thing that did get better, but only because we've spent some money over the three years, is we now have approximately 14.5 million of capital requests that we need to fill over the next five years. These are not nice-to-have items; these are really need-to-have items. Our fleets are aging, as is our infrastructure. We are also living in an environment with increased regulatory requirements, and this is driving up our costs, as we need to consistently get outside expertise to help us navigate the new environment. Our goal all along, as the Board of Selectmen, is to find and get a balance for all of you taxpayers that maintains compliance, fiscal responsibility, and also does not inflate our tax rate. So in spite of these challenges that we've had at the townhouse, next slide, please, we have also been able to accomplish quite a bit. And so what I wanted to share with you were some of the accomplishments. We are very excited to announce to all of you that we are in the process of implementing an online permitting software program. To many of you who have put on additions or are trying to build pools or garages, you will find this very helpful, as the software itself will ensure that each of the land-use departments are able to know where the projects are, where they stand, and also, citizens, you can see what your neighbor is doing. This will all be public information. The best news about this is, the cost of this permitting software is $148,000, but our staff was able to secure a grant of $100,000 to cover the cost for this. So we really thank them. Communications, this is a struggle for us. We're constantly being told, "The website isn't up to date. Information doesn't get to people. I didn't know this was happening." Trust me, we are trying really hard. We have completed a survey, which hopefully will help us do a better job getting information to all of our citizens. We've really expanded the reach of our digital newsletter. It's impressive, the number of citizens that have signed up to receive it. We've tried to increase our presence over social media. We have also introduced Board of Selectmen office hours. We would like more people to attend those, but monthly, we are waiting to hear from you. Last month, I attended at the library, and I met many of our younger citizens who can't vote, but they all know that I know how to operate the Keurig machine. So I was a big hit at the library. Another thing we are excited to roll out is electrical aggregation. It's something that was approved at the last town meeting. We are almost there, and this will save us all. This will all save us on our energy bill. Next slide. I would be remiss if I also told you there were certain things that we didn't get to this past year, things that were approved by town meeting. One of them was the three-to-five Board of Selectmen Study Group. But not only are we understaffed on the staffing level, you'll notice there are only two of us here, and it's really difficult for us to cover everything. So we will get to that next year. Now, there have also been some great wins for us as a community. It took over 20 years, but I am proud to let you all know our community center is opening, and it will be opening sometime this summer. The building is magnificent. I was blown away at how nice the spaces are, and I hope you all feel the same way when you go and visit. It is certainly going to be an asset to all of us. Another win for us is the outcome of HALE education. There were rumors floating around that we would be coming to all of you to ask for $10 million to get a conservation restriction on the thousand acres that HALE has in Dover. We are very pleased to let you know that all that money was raised privately. There will be a CR on all the land in Dover, so that we can all enjoy, or continue to enjoy passive recreation, and it didn't cost us a dime as a town. Next slide. We do have some challenges. We do have some challenges facing us in the upcoming years and months. One of them is the MBTA Communities Act, which I'm sure you've heard around on the news. It's also referred to as 3A. We do qualify as a small adjacent community, and we do need to be compliant by the end of the year. The Planning Board is doing a fantastic job making sure that we have all the information in place. They are running information sessions. I really urge all of you to attend one of them, or at a minimum, look at the website to get information. It is important that we all understand that compliance requires that we designate an MBTO overlay district, which is really a zoning requirement. So please educate yourself. We will have a special town meeting in the fall for that. Capital funding, as I mentioned, it continues to be a struggle for us. We are going to retain an advisor to help us balance how to pay for capital. We want to make sure that we don't over-leverage the town, but we really do need to use debt, and we need to find the right balance. Next slide, please. Recruiting continues to be a challenge for us. We are working with a skeletal crew at the townhouse. Sometimes, we don't respond to calls fast enough, but the staff that we have is working 24/7 to get everything done, and we're hoping to be more successful with our recruiting this coming year. Last of all, the rail trail, which really could be another asset to this community. We are exploring the feasibility of the rail trail project. This is not the same project that was presented to all of you eight years ago. It's a new project, and again, I encourage you to attend information sessions run by Park and Rec, and to look at the website to educate yourself. But thank you all for listening to me. I, you know, I think we're in good shape, but we do have challenges ahead of us.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. We'll now move into the body of the meeting. If you turn to page 14 of your Blue Book, you'll see Article 1 at the top of the page, which is to hear or act on committee reports. And if I could call upon the Chair of the Warrant Committee, Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of various reports by the Town Clerk be waived, and the reports be received and placed on file.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, you're going to have to get that mic closer to you. Speak right into it directly.
I move that the reading of the various reports by the Town Clerk be waived, and the reports be received and placed on file.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Motion has been made and seconded to waive the reading of the town reports. Is there any discussion of this? Hearing none. On my signal, if you are in favor, please press "1." If you're opposed, please press "2." Okay, motion carries 213 to 7. Okay, Article 2, which is in the middle of page 14. Mr. Howard.
Mr. Moderator.
All right, you speak directly into the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the salaries recommended for elected officials of the town, as shown in the right-hand column of the Warrant Committee report, as shown on page 14 in the Blue Book, be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is raised to each, they be approved as read.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And Mr. Hudson has seconded. So this motion will authorize me to call over the salaries that are listed on page 14, and if no one objects, those salaries will be deemed to be approved. So the vote right now is to authorize me to read over those salaries. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion will press "1" on my signal. Those opposed will press "2." Okay, motion carries 214 to 20. What I'm going to do now is read over the salaries that are listed on page 14, lower half of the page. If anybody has a question or an objection to any of the salaries, please say "hold," and we'll come back and consider that particular salary item separately. If there are no holds that are stated, all of the salaries that are read over will be deemed to have been approved. So I will now start to read over the salaries, page 14. Board of Selectmen, Chair, $200. Clerk, $150. Member, $100. Assessors, Chair, $400. Members, $350. I'm sorry, I read the wrong column. For Town Clerk, $103,975, the far-right-hand column. Planning Board, Chair, $100. Member, $50. Constables, there are three constables, each of them will receive $150. Board of Health, Chair, $150. Member, $100. Are there any holds? All right, not hearing any holds, I deemed all these salaries to be approved. Okay, on to Article 3, which is on page 15 of the Blue Book. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the following Board and Department revolving fund limits for fiscal year 2026 pursuant to the provisions of Section 516 Finances of the General Bylaws of the Town of Dover. Building Department Gas, Plumbing, and Wiring Inspectors, $68,900. Board of Health Inspections and Permitting, $25,000. Library Materials and Replacement, $5,000. Council on Aging, Senior Activities and Transportation, $40,000. Recycling Committee, Material Sales Proceeds, $4,000. Department of Public Works, Maintenance, Repair, and Replacement of Facilities and Equipment for the Transfer Station, $35,000. Community Center, Costs Associated with Operating the Community Center and Maintenance Improvement Projects for the Facility, $25,000. And further, that the fees charged for these services be credited to the respective accounts, and that the aforementioned boards or departments be authorized to make expenditures in the respective accounts and for the respective purposes up to the amounts set forth above.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiss. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Boudreau. Are there any questions or discussion on this motion? Okay, this, seeing none, this is a majority vote, so on my signal, if you're in favor, press "1" for "yes." If you're opposed, please press "2" for "no." Motion carries 226 to 5. Okay, now we're moving to Article 4, and you should have received a handout when you checked in that has the latest edition of Article 4, and we'll be reading from that handout, so please make sure you have a copy of it. Does anybody not have a copy? Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands, okay. Okay, for the motion, Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the salaries and expenses recommended by the Departments, Officers, Boards, and Committees of the town, as shown in the FY 2026 Requested column in the handout, provided to town meeting and entitled "Revisions to Article 4 Operating Budget," be called over by the moderator. And if no objection is made, that such salaries and expenses are approved, and to meet these appropriations, the town raise such amounts from the tax leviation and other general revenues of the town, and transfer the following sums: $200,000 from overlay surplus, and $834,73 from free cash.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Howard has seconded. So this, again, is similar to the prior motion. It's simply empowering me to read over the items for fiscal year '26. I'll go through each line item, and if somebody has a question or an objection to that item, please say "hold," and we'll come back and consider that item separately. So again, this will simply authorize me to read through, and if no one objects, the ones that have not been objected to will be deemed to be approved. So, any questions about this vote to authorize me to read over? Okay, if you're in favor of the motion, you'll press "1" for "yes." If you're opposed, press "2" for "no." Okay, motion carries 218 to 18. Now, I'm going to call upon Mr. Weiss's Chair of the Warrant Committee to make a budget presentation on behalf of the Warrant Committee. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before we get to our report, I'd like to just acknowledge the hard work of the members of the Warrant Committee this year, who've worked hard to educate themselves about the town's finances and problems, and have done what I think is a truly spectacular job. I'd also particularly like to acknowledge two members of the committee who are finishing their tenure on the Warrant Committee, Cam Hudson and Janet McCormick. They've been really stellar members of the committee, and we will miss them going forward. Next slide. The charge of the Warrant Committee is, the Warrant Committee's function is to review, vet, and recommend to the Board of Selectmen and to town voters the annual budget and all town articles in preparation for the annual town meeting. The Warrant Committee can be thought of as part of the town's legislative The Warrant Committee can be thought of as part of the town's legislative branch. If the Select Board and the administrative staff of the town's executive, or the town's executive branch, town meeting's the legislature, and we're the Ways and Means Committee. Our recommendations to town meeting are in the blue book, actually, maybe it's now the blue and white book, but it's, I hope that you have looked at those recommendations and will continue to look at them as this meeting goes on. Next slide. Each year, the budget cycle begins with a guidance letter from the Warrant Committee to the town administration and departments. The last several years, that letter has specified that the town attempted to maintain level service in its budget. This year, the Warrant Committee broke from that tradition. We feel that level service is not sustainable for the town. The demands on the departments and the committees are constantly changing and evolving. Consequently, this year's budget didn't ask for level service, but rather asked that any increase or expansion of service be justified. Next slide. There are good reasons to be wary about growing the town budget. As you know, the property taxes in town are substantial. We're, last year, the mean tax bill in Dover was ninth of the, in size of the 341 towns in the Commonwealth. For comparison, Sherburne is sixth, Wellesley's fourth, Needham is 18th. So while high, we're comparable to towns that are in our area. The other thing that constrains the growth of the town budget is Proposition Two and a Half. We always need to be mindful of the fact that our property tax levy can never exceed a growth rate of two and a half percent. Next slide. To put the rest of this presentation in context, I'd like to just show you how the appropriations of the town are allocated and point out in particular that education accounts for 54% of the appropriations of the town. That's been historically true, mid-50s for a number of years. I'd also like to point out that insurance and pensions, debt and interest and education count for 70% of the expenses of the town. Next slide. The biggest challenge in recent years for the town has been growth of the operating budget, salaries, supplies, services. And in recent years, the biggest demand has been to maintain control over that growth. Last year, the operating budget grew 6%, and that took a substantial amount of effort on the part of the town administration and the Select Board. This year, Howard, we were clued in fairly early that the operating budget was not going to grow by as much this year. And in fact, we thought likely even in early January, that the growth rate would be less That growth rate was constrained even though the town, and we all felt it was important that there be a number of new positions and new services added. Just to list a few of them, new treasurer-collector, GIS update, GIS is a geographic information system, it's a computerized system that's used by the Planning Board, by Open Space Committee, by the Concom. There was a growth in the expenses of the Concom for land management and trail maintenance. The ambulance service needed increased on call coverage and increased training. DPW added or upgraded, engineered a full-time, coincident with the need for greater expertise around stormwater management. And the Council on Aging had a new part-time outreach coordinator. Next slide. I can't go through all of these or explain the rationale from all, but I thought it worthwhile highlighting a couple of the expansions that did occur. One is, was cited already by Ms. Hunter, the implementation of the permitting software. She cited a number of the advantages of the permitting software to the Planning Board, to the Concom, to the Building Department. It's also important to recognize that this allows the town to keep track of applications in a way that has never previously been possible. Instead of sifting through reams of paper, now the database will be searchable and you'll be able both to do, to find specific applications, but also to do statistics on what's coming Another expansion is the full-time fire chief. Question why that is necessary, Chief Wright, we'll do a presentation later, but he's informed us that one of the things that's occurred over the last several decades is that firefighting has changed substantially. There are fewer residential fires in town than there used to be, but the fires that do occur are more challenging to fight. They're faster, they're hotter, and they require a different skillset than used to be true in the past. Consequently, there's more of an emphasis on training and accreditation, and the fire chief is necessary to keep track of that training and also to make sure that we're in compliance with all the regulations that are now out there around the quality of fire Most towns, small towns in the state of Massachusetts are now converting from part-time fire chiefs to full-time fire chiefs. Next slide. Despite all these new positions and new services, the final budget number for the operating budget was $46,580,240. And that is a 2.4% increase from last year. As I said earlier, the last year, we struggled to keep it down to 6%. Next slide. This slide shows, though, that we shouldn't feel too confident because we did so well this year. What you can see here in the top section is that the growth in the variance FY 25 versus FY 26 column, the growth in general town operations, protective agencies, public works, et cetera, averaged more than 8%. The reason the town was able to keep the, the operating budget growth to more reasonable figures, down in the next slide. There are three big contributions apart from the overall excellent management by the town administration, the Select Board, and most of all, the Warrant Committee. Debt service for the middle school was paid off this year, which significantly decreased, that comes out of the budget and decreased the size of the operating budget. There was overall a moderate increase in school costs, only a 4%, 0.4% increase in education overall. Maturing town debt was the other, was another significant factor in keeping the operating budget in range. As principal declines, the debt service declined. And finally, somewhat unexpectedly, the increases in our insurance premiums and pension costs were less than anticipated. While this year's growth in the operating budget was better than anticipated, the capital budget, that's Articles Five and Six this year, represented a substantial increase over prior years. The Capital Budget Committee maintains a five-year projected budget of capital expenses, so this increase wasn't completely unexpected, but nevertheless, the size of the increase was intimidating. The original requests for the capital budget were $6 million. The average year in the past has been between a million and a million and a half dollars a year, so this is a big increase. Three requests initially accounted for about 60% of the capital budget requests. Replacement of the fuel island at the town garage, replacement of a fire truck, and finally, replacement and upgrading of the turf field, track lighting, track lighting and fencing at the high school. Next slide. As the budget cycle progressed, capital requests decreased for the year. The fuel island was deferred for a year, for several reasons. The initial estimate was the athletic improvements at the high school would cost about $2 million to be shared between Dover and Sherburne, but the bids came in below expected, and the Regional School Committee was able to put $350,000 of their own IND funds, which is analogous to free cash for the town, toward the project. Sherburne's town meeting approved their contribution to the athletic improvements last week. The fire truck deserves special mention. Dover's is unique compared to surrounding towns because there's minimal coverage with municipal water. Firefighters need to transport the water, about 10,000 gallons to fires. This fire truck would have a $2,500 gallon water tank with an integrated foam tank. Not having this truck would substantially impair the ability of the fire service to transport water to new fires. This new truck is replacing an older truck that's now 34 years old. I doubt that many people here have a 34-year-old car because they're both dangerous and unreliable. And in particular, it's important to point out that it's dangerous to wait until this truck dies because it now takes two years to replace a truck. You put in an order and you don't get the truck for at least two years. Capital requests this year were also notable for replacements of a number of other necessary pieces of equipment that are well past their expected lives. A few concerns. While the operating budget has increased at near the rate of inflation this fiscal year, we don't expect growth will be this constrained in future years. We'll be negotiating new teachers' contracts soon. The rising healthcare costs due to pharmacy costs that will be factored into our healthcare costs, healthcare insurance, and we have to be aware that inflation may return. Capital requests for the next several years are well above historical numbers, so deferring requests is not going to bias anything in, as a strategy. Overall, I think the town is in good shape financially, but we do face significant obstacles going forward, and we'll need to continue to be careful about replacing and maintaining used equipment that is outliving its useful life, but all, at the same time, maintaining our conservative budget stance. In closing, I'd just like to address specifically the two citizens petitions that are at the end of the warrant this year. Warrant Committee's recommendations about those petitions are in the blue book and I think are adequately articulated there for you. But I would like to just, from my own personal standpoint, I'd like to thank the two petitioners for initiating their petitions because they both raised significant issues that we think deserve careful consideration by the town and ultimately, action. I'd also like to thank the town administration and the members of the Select Board for supporting us through the budget process. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiss. Are there any questions for Mr. Weiss before I start to read through the line items on the budget? Okay, so if you have the handout, I'll be reading the line items that are listed in the left column, the total for each line item, and I'll be reading the amount that's requested for fiscal year 26, which is the third column from the right. So number 122, Selectmen, $961,177. I'll skip over the next item because nothing is requested. 131, Warrant Committee, $9,600. 132, Reserve Fund, $250,000. 135, Town Accountant, total $301,731. Number 141, Assessor, total $237,582. Number 145, Treasurer Collector, total $322,899. Number, I'm sorry, was there a hold? No? Okay.
Next one over.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry. The lighting's stuff tough up here. So 145, Treasurer Collector, $368,631. Thank you. 151, Law, $250,000. 155, Information Technology, total $332,795. 161, Town Clerk, total $115,815. Number 162, Elections Registration, total $88,789. 171, Conservation Commission, total $191,970. 175, Planning, total $242,192. 176, Board of Appeals, total $4,303. Number 191, Whiting Road, total $7,000. 192, Townhouse Expenses, $54,182. Number 193, Dover Community Center, total $48,300. Skipping over, 195, over to 199, Building Maintenance, total $484,404. Number 210, Police, total $2720,703. On to the next page. Fire, 200, number 220, Fire, total $919,481. 231, Ambulance, total $434,949. 241, Building Inspector, total $260,514. Skipping down to 292, Animal Control, total $25,672. Skipping down to 299, Protective Agency Building, total $61,700. Now we move to Education, and the Dover schools have actually reduced the amount that they're requesting for fiscal year 2026. In lieu of the number you see listed there, $11,538,288, they've reduced their request to $11,453,288. So again, that's $11,453,288. Number 301, Dover Share Regional, total $13,131,729. Oh, sorry, go back to that. Okay, let me read that again. Number 301, Dover Share Regional, $13,131,279. Okay, next page. 302, Minuteman Vocational, $281,722. Number 304, Other Vocational Schools, $25,000. Next to the category, Public Works and Facilities, number 411, Engineering, no requests, jump to 412, DPW, Highway Maintenance, $1,496,655. 423, Snow and Ice, $384,000. 424, Lighting, Street Lighting, $8,899. 425, Town Garage, $116,766. Number 428, Roadwork, $355,000. Jumping down to 439, Solid Waste, total $443,041. Number 450, Town Water, total $47,271. Number 491, Cemetery, total $154,181. On to the next page. Number 510, Board of Health, total $298,149. Number 541, Council on Aging, total $333,701. Veterans, total $2,000. Next category, Culture and Recreation, number 610, Library, total $974,994. Number 650, Parks and Recreation, total $583,051. Historical Commission, total $1,260. Skipping over the Memorial Day Parade. Okay, sorry, thank you. 691, Historical Commission, $1,250. 691, Historical Commission, $1,250. Okay, next, Depth Service. Number 710 and 751, Maturing Debt Principle and Interest, $2,417,668. Onto the next page. Number 912, Workman's Comp, $105,000. 913, Unemployment Compensation Insurance, $20,000. 914, Group Insurance, $3,057,252. 916, Medicare/FAICA, $250,000. Number 945, Other Insurance, $368,935. Pensions, number 911, Norfolk County Retirement, $1,797,430. Total Unclassified, $5,598,617,000. And because we changed the budget for the Dover School System, the grand total now I didn't hear any holds. Anybody else here?
No.
No holds? No questions? Okay, these items are all deemed to have been approved. We now move to the next article. Article 5, which is also a handout. This article, the handout, is a little bit complicated because it's going to require three separate votes. The first vote begins with the items that are designated 1C at the top of the handout and proceeds from 1C down to 6A at the upper half of the handout. Then there will be two other motions dealing with Engine 1, Engine Number 1 Rescue Pumper Supplemental Funding, and a third motion dealing with the replacement of Engine 3. Those two, last two motions, the second motion and the third motion, are going to be voted on separately because they require debt financing, and that will require a two-thirds vote. The first motion is simply a majority vote because debt financing is not required. So that's why they've been broken out into separate items. So again, the first item we will consider is designated as the first motion, beginning with the items 1C towards the top of the page. I'll now turn to Mr. Hudson to make a motion with respect to motion number 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the capital budget items recommended by the Capital Budget Committee, as shown in the handout provided to town meeting and entitled Revised Order and Amendment to Article 5 Capitol Budget, be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that to meet these appropriations, the town raise and appropriate the sum of $570,000 transfer from free cash, the sum of $805,512, and transfer $250,000 from the unexpended balance from Article 5 3A of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting for the following items. 1C, Fire Department, Ambulance, Radio System, $90,600. 1D, Fire Department, Ambulance, Portable Radios, Fire, $41,650. 1E, Fire Department, Ambulance, Portable Radios, Ambulance, $22,262. 2A, Police Department, Patrol Vehicles, $130,000. 2B, Police Department, Mobile Cruiser Radio, $33,000. 2C, Police Department, Fingerprint Scanner, $27,000. 3A, Department of Public Works, Six-Wheeled Dump Truck with Plow and Spreader, for $360,000. 3B, Department of Public Works, Pickup Truck with Plow, $110,000. 3C, Department of Public Works, Dump Truck with Plow and Spreader, $130,000. 3D, Department of Public Works, Tractor with Mower Deck and Snow Attachments, Parks, $65,000. 3E, Department of Public Works, Mower Cemetery, $45,000. 4A, Selectmen, Library HVAC System, $250,000. 4B, Selectmen, Library Elevator Repair, $70,000. 4C, Library, New Office Construction, for $20,000. 4D, Library Kitchenette Renovation, $12,000. 4E, Selectmen, Library Roof Replacement, $86,000. 5A, Parks and Recreation, Department Van, $58,000. 6A, School, Jiggering, Flooring, $75,000.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. So this motion is similar to others, is simply asking that I read over the items that are listed under the first motion category. If anybody has a question or an objection to that specific item, they should say "hold" and we'll consider that item separately. Any questions on the motion? Okay, when I give you the signal, press 1 if you're in favor of the motion, press 2 if you're opposed. Motion carries 217 to 21. Okay, so I'm now going to read over the items that are designated under the first motion. 1C, Fire Department, Ambulance, Radio System, $90,600. 1D, Fire Department, Ambulance, Portable Radios, Fire, $41,650. 1E, Fire Department, Ambulance, Portable Radios, Ambulance, $22,262. 2A, Police Department, Patrol Vehicles, $130,000. 2B, Police Department, Mobile Cruiser Radio, $33,000. 2C, Police Department, Fingerprint Scanner, $27,000. 3A, Department of Public Works, Six-Wheeled Dump Truck with Plow and Spreader, $360,000. 3B, Department of Public Works, Pickup Truck with Plow, $110,000. 3C, Department of Public Works, Dump Truck with Plow and Spreader, $130,000. 3D, Department of Public Works, Tractor with Mower Deck and Snow Attachments, Parks, $65,000. 3E, Department of Public Works, Mower Cemetery, $45,000. 4A, Selectmen, Library HVAC System, $250,000. 4B, Selectmen, Library Elevator Repair, $70,000. 4C, Selectmen, Library, New Office Construction, $20,000. 4D, Selectmen, Library Kitchenette Renovation, $12,000. 4E, Selectmen, Library Roof Replacement, $86,000. 5A, Parks and Recreation Department Van, $58,000. 6A, School, Jiggering, Flooring, $75,000. Are there any holds on any of these? Okay, hearing and seeing none, these are deemed to have been approved by the town. Okay, now we're going to move to the second motion, which is for the Engine Number 1 Rescue Pumper. Okay, Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Moderator, 1A, I move that the town appropriate a sum of $55,000 for Engine Number 1 Rescue Pumper Supplemental Funding, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $55,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny has seconded. Okay. Chief Wright, did you want to say a few words about this?
Good evening, Jim Wright, interim fire chief. This is a primarily cost related to an emission standard upgrade that was required by the federal government. We had to go to the next option up for motor size in order to meet the emission requirements. So this is what this request is for. If there's any more specific questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Thank you, chief. Are there any questions for this matter? Okay, let's move to a vote then. This is a two-thirds vote because the debt financing is involved. On my signal, if you're in favor of this motion, you'll press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press 2 for no. Motion carries 231 to 17. Okay, now on to motion 3, which is at the bottom of the page for the handout. Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Moderator, 1B, I move that the town appropriate a sum of $1,250,000 for the replacement of Engine 3, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $1,250,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny, for the second. Okay, back to you, chief.
We have a quick presentation for you before this next article. So as you can see on the picture, we have our 1990 Engine 3. It holds 2,500 gallons of water, and we're requesting that it be replaced. You just heard about Engine 1. That is a 1989 fire engine, so the reason they're so closely being requested to be replaced is they're both rather old. So if we go to the next slide. One back, please. One more. There we go. So first of all, safety of the firefighters. Over the years, there's been numerous upgrades in the safety of the vehicles that the firefighters are riding in. I'll get in much more detail in the next slide, but that's one of the primary concerns. The next bullet, please, is the safety of the residents and their property. This is one of our two large water-carrying vehicles. As I said, it carries 2,500 gallons of water. It is the second vehicle that goes, second engine that goes out the door for a structure fire. Our first engine, Engine 4, has 1,500 gallons of water. Engine 3 has 2,500. When we run our hose lines, the smaller lines, if you want to call them that, flow 160 gallons a minute, and the larger ones, 500. And if we're using our master streams, which is the deck gun on top of the truck, that's 1,000 gallons a minute. So depending on the volume of fire, we use the appropriate-sized line, and the quicker we can extinguish a fire, the quicker we can help save lives and property. So that's really a key factor for us. And the fact that we don't have hydrants within the community that provide adequate fire flow. So you see a number, especially in the center of town, you see hydrants around there. Those don't have the capability of providing enough water to support our vehicles. We're fortunate to have some of our neighbor communities have hydrants on the edges of town that we can utilize if we need to, but the vast majority of the community, we don't have quick access to a fire hydrant. We have to shuttle water from a fire scene from either a pond or a fire hydrant back to the scene. And next bullet. So lack of replacement parts. As a 35-year-old vehicle, it is difficult to find parts. Some of them are commonly available, but many of them, for example, oops, the computer that runs the brains of the motor on the vehicle. Actually, we had that fail several years ago, and we were very lucky to be able to find one. If that happens again in the near future, I'm not sure we will. The vehicle just came back from the shop. It was in for three weeks, I believe. One of the piping to the pump on the vehicle, from the tank to the pump, rotted from the inside out and started leaking. Luckily, our mechanic caught it doing the routine checks that we do on the vehicles. It was a little over $3,000 just to repair that one piece of pipe. And as you know, and would expect, in a fire truck, there's lots of pipe running around for the different discharges we have on the vehicle. So we expect that we'll be replacing more of them as time goes on. We prefer it doesn't happen, or hope sincerely that it doesn't happen when we're in the middle of an emergency. Next bullet. So NFPA 1900 is the standard for firefighting apparatus. It's the National Fire Protection Association. They state that fire apparatus over 25 years of age should be replaced, although we're not specifically required to follow that standard. That is a standard that everything is measured against, especially in any lawsuit or things like that. Standards are what's referenced. And then additionally, in regard to just the vehicle itself, as the warrant committee alluded, it takes two-plus years for us to receive a vehicle once it's replaced. So doing it now, we're at 35, so we'll be 37-ish by the time we replace it. Next slide. And next click. So as you can see in that picture, it's an open cab, which means that the firefighters riding in behind the driver actually are back, rear-facing, and they're, they sit on that seat that's right there. It only has a waist belt. It doesn't have a shoulder harness or anything like that. The other issue is, as you can see, there's not a lot of structural integrity around that area that a firefighter sits. So if in the very unfortunate event, there's an accident and the truck rolls over, there's little to no protection to protect that firefighter. Other items that aren't in this vehicle, anti-lock brakes, all your vehicles, I'm sure I have that. There's also anti-rollover electronic systems in the newer vehicles. There's airbags in the new vehicles. So there's a host of items that make it much safer for the firefighters going to calls. And we don't go to the calls only during the nice sunny days. We're going probably in the worst environment there is. So the potential for an accident, although we have really good drivers, is certainly there. Next bullet, please. And I kind of already said this, but it responds with the primary engine. But if the primary engine goes down, Engine 4, Engine 3 goes up to number 1 to a fire, and Engine 1 comes in behind it. So it's, fire apparatus are very large vehicles. They require regular maintenance and service. Things do break on them, so there is out-of-service time regularly on fire apparatus, which is why we have the backup engines to be able to fall in line if it's necessary. And last bullet. And again, I already covered this, but replacement parts are very difficult to find quite often. So those are the primary reasons. I did do an online presentation a few nights ago. I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to see that, but I'll answer any questions if there is any, and I appreciate your consideration. Next slide. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. Are there any questions? Okay, well, let's proceed to a vote then. If you're in favor of this motion, you'll be pressing 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll be pressing 2 for no. You may vote now. This is a two-thirds vote. Motion carries 240 to 13. Okay, now we're going back to the blue book, page 31, dealing with Article 6, which is appropriation for the Dover Sherburne Regional School capital expenses. Mr. Howard, again, page 31.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate a sum of $714,350 for the replacement of the Dover Sherburne Regional School District turf field, track, and fencing, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $714,350 under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bedrow. Okay, the presenters on this article are Mark Healy, who's the chair of the Dover Sherburne Regional School, and also Mark Novak, who's the project manager for ACTIVUS, which will be involved with the work that's going to be done at the school. Mr. Novak is not a resident of the town, so in order for him to address the town meeting, we first need to have a vote approving, or allowing him to address the town. Mr. Healy?
Thank you.
Can you come up here and make the motion, please, sir?
Thank you. I move to ask the town's permission to allow Mark Novak, project manager from ACTIVUS, a non-resident working on the track and field renovation project for the the Dover Sherburn Regional School District, to present to town meeting about Article Six.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Healy. Do I hear a second? Okay. Motion has been seconded. Again, this is simply to allow somebody who's not a town resident voter to address the town, and I think a voice vote will suffice. So, if on my signal, when I say "all in favor", please say "aye". If you're in favor, then I'll ask the nays to please voice their opposition. All in favor, please say "aye"?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Mr. Healy, Mr. Novak, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a brief introduction on behalf of the Regional School Committee, and then we'll hear from Mr. Novak. In 2012, our initial turf field and track were completed thanks to a generous gift coordinated by the Dover Sherburn Boosters, with the Regional School Committee agreeing to handle ongoing maintenance and eventual replacement costs. This athletic complex is vital, serving our daily school activities like phys ed, high school athletics, youth sports, community programs, ability group activities, and residential recreation. Our single turf field significantly increased field availability, especially during unpredictable New England springs, and reduces wear on our grass fields. Despite past external requests for more turf, the Regional School Committee believes one synthetic field effectively balances communities while allowing us to properly maintain other grass fields. It's important to note, this is the only turf field serving both towns, and, as Mr. Weiss referenced in the Capitol Budget Report, this article passed at Sherburn's town meeting last week. To be fiscally responsible, we strategically deferred this turf replacement until fiscal year '26, aligning with the final debt payments for the middle school this May. This provides approximately $700,000 in budget relief to the region's FY '26 operating budget, and is reflected in FY '26 operating assessments. Furthermore, the Regional School Committee unanimously voted to dedicate $350,000 from our excess and deficiency funds to further lower the cost to the towns. To guide this project, we've partnered with Activitas Incorporated. We're pleased to have their Project Manager, Mark Novak, here tonight to detail the plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Moderator, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Novak. I am Design Principal with Activitas. We're an athletic and recreational design firm based out of Dedham, Mass. Next slide, please. So, why are we here? Next slide. Basically, the synthetic turf field here at the high school has reached the end of its useful life. Every major seam across the entire length of the field is now visibly apparent, and that is one of the first signs that the field has reached the end of its life. Next slide, please. You can see a number of areas on the surface where UV degradation has worn down fibers and has created failures in the surface of the field. This is leading to injury risks for the student athletes. Next slide, please. Couple of areas have been replaced, specifically in the high-use areas of the goal mouse of the lacrosse and soccer creases. This was done, really, to prevent further injury, but it's also presenting a challenge because it affects ball roll. Specifically for sports like field hockey and soccer, where ball roll is critical on the playing surface, the turf patches that have been placed in are at a slightly different elevation and cause undue bounces. Next slide, please. The track has also reached the end of its useful life. So, the turf is 12 years old. The track was renovated 12 years ago, but the base underneath, the asphalt base beneath the resilient track surfacing, is over 20 years old, and that needs to be replaced. You can see in this slide, you have some spider cracking in the upper left-hand corner. You see cracking in between pavement seams in the upper right-hand corner. And then on the two bottom images, you can see where the track surfacing is actually delaminating from the asphalt base. Really, the only way to repair this is to start over. Next slide, please. So, where are we now? We've prepared bid documents, and we put this out to bid. As the War Committee stated earlier tonight, we've received bids, and they came back better than expected. We had a lot of great competition from excellent contractors, and we see some really aggressive pricing. Next slide, please. So, if this passes tonight, we will be proposing to completely renovate the track surfacing. We'll remove and dispose of the existing track surfacing and recycle in place the existing asphalt base. So, we'll come out, grind it up, and then grate it and compact it, and then put down a new asphalt base. A new urethane track surfacing will go down on top of that. It's a urethane track surfacing, which is great in this area because it doesn't change consistency in varying climatic conditions. In warm weather and cold weather, it stays the same, whereas other track surfaces get hard in the cold and get really, really soft in the warm weather. And then we'll restripe the lane lines and all the event markings, just the way it is now. The synthetic turf is much of the same. The existing carpet will be recycled or repurposed. A recycling facility is coming online this summer in Rockland, Massachusetts. It'll be the first of its kind in the United States. It will be the largest synthetic turf recycling facility in the world. The existing infill will be repurposed. So, right now, you have sand and rubber infill. That will go to the recycling facility, be put into super sacks, cleaned, and then used on other projects. Because on this project, we're talking about using a natural infill that's made out of wood, and I have a slide in a couple of minutes that I'll get to on that. The existing system you have now is a dual-fiber system. This system will also be a dual-fiber system. And the good thing about dual-fiber carpets is they have longevity, and aesthetics are better than the older technology, and they're good for ball roll, specifically for sports like soccer. And then finally, I want to note something about the fabrication of the carpet. Recently, there's been concerns in the press about PFOS or forever chemicals being associated with synthetic turf systems. That is a thing of the past. PFOS were used in our lubricant during the fiber extrusion process. All PFOS, excuse me, no PFOS are used in the manufacturing or the development of any of the components of a synthetic turf system now by all the major manufacturers. And the manufacturer that we'll be going forward with on this project is much of the same. Next slide, please.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, this is a sample of the resilient underlayment that will be going on in the field. It's a concussion pad. It's insurance policy for your student athletes. You know, it prevents the field from getting to critical firmness. It's a recyclable product. It's made in the United States, and will be good for two lives of the carpet, if not more. Next slide, please. This is the natural wood infill. It is sustainably harvested down in Georgia from Loblawli pines. It cools the surface of the field through vapor transpiration in the summer up to 30 degrees. So, this will be used with sand in the infill. Next slide, please. We're also proposing to replace the fixtures of the light poles out there with LED lighting. Energy consumption costs will go down. The ability to control the lighting from cell phones will give the community more access to the facility.
Wrap it up, sir.
Next slide, please. Where are we going? And this is it. This is the rendering of the proposed project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Before we move to a vote, are there any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Name and address, sir.
Yes. So, I'm John Daley. I live in 92 Pine Street here in Dover. I've been coaching in this town youth football for over 12 years, Julie, right? I've coached it for 30 years. I played football on bad turf, and I'm just telling you, that field is completely shot. The average useful life, you can look it up, I can provide the data, is anywhere between seven and 10 years. We're at 12. 26% likely to have a knee injury playing on turf. That's from the NFL. NIH says young girls, 1.6 more likely than on grass. You don't have a choice because of the use, that you have to have one turf field. But in this town, that should be the best, in my humble opinion. And so, I'm going to pause by telling you, I came here tonight because in the last two years, on a football team, we've lost six kids to ACL and PCL injuries. One of them was so bad, the kid blew his hamstring, his PCL, and his ACL. And I tell you that not to scare or make you feel bad, but that field is shot, and if you had to look these kids in the eye, like I did, you'd come tonight, and you'd vote yes, because no kid deserves to go through that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please try to hold your applause until after the vote, so we can move along quickly. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I think we're ready to move to a vote, then. Now, this is a two-thirds vote because debt financing is involved. So, if you're in favor of the motion, you'll be pressing 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll be pressing 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries 234 to 16. Okay. We're now moving to page 32 of the Blue Book, and we have three articles tonight that the sponsors of the articles have asked that we dismiss them. These are Articles Seven, Eight, and Fourteen. Seven and Eight are on page 32, and Article Fourteen is on page 34. I'm now going to ask for a motion to allow me to call over those items, and if nobody objects, they'll be deemed to have been dismissed. Our people who are leaving, I remind you that this might come up for reconsideration. Forewarned is forearmed. Okay. All right. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Articles Seven, Eight, and Fourteen be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, be dismissed as recommended in the warrant committee report in the Blue Book.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has made that I call over Articles Seven, Eight, and Fourteen, and if no one objects, they'll be deemed to have been dismissed. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay. Motion is a majority vote. Please press 1 if you're in favor. Press 2 if you're opposed. You may vote now. Motion carries 197 to 4. So, I will now call over these articles. Article Seven, page 32 of the Blue Book, appropriate for unemployment compensation fund, Board of Selectment. Article Eight, also page 32, appropriate for sick leave for retiring police officers, Board of Selectment. Article Fourteen, page 34, supplemental appropriations for Article Four of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Committee. Any holes or questions? Hearing none, I deem those articles to have been dismissed. Okay. So, now we're going to jump ahead to Article Nine on page 33, which deals with appropriation for road construction, reconstruction, and improvements. Ms. McCormick.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectment to enter into contracts, apply for, accept, expand, and borrow in anticipation of any funds allotted by the Commonwealth for the construction, reconstruction, and other improvements of town roads and related infrastructure.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for the second. So, again, we're on Article Nine, page 33, vote with respect to appropriation for road construction. Is there any discussion on this article? Okay. Hearing none, let's move to a vote. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll be pressing 1 for yes, 2 for no. You Motion carries 199 to 4. On to Article Ten, which is on page 33 of the Blue Book, appropriate to conservation fund. Ms. McCormick.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the conservation fund to be used by the Conservation Commission for any purpose authorized by Chapter 40, Section AC of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Is there any discussion on this article and the motion? Okay. Seeing none, let's move to a vote. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll be pressing 1 for yes, 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries 196 to 13. Article Eleven, which is on page 33 of the Blue Book, dealing with the general stabilization fund. Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $212,000 to the general stabilization fund authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Azvedo. Okay. This is a motion dealing with the general stabilization fund. Are there any questions or discussions with respect to the motion? All right. Hearing none, let's move to a vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries 194 to 12. Article Twelve, which is on page 33 of the Blue Book, appropriation for Dover Sherburn Regional School District, the OPEB Stabilization Fund. Ms. Boudreau.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $765,000 to the Dover Sherburn Regional School District, OPEB Stabilization Fund, as authorized by Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Valman. Okay. Any questions or comments on this article and motion? Hearing none, let's move to a vote. If you're in favor of this motion, you'll press 1 for yes. Opposed, you'll press 2 for no. You may vote now. And this is a majority vote. Motion carries 197 to 13. Okay. Now, on to Article Thirteen, page 34, which is an appropriation for unpaid bills. Ms. Boudreau.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $15,114.55 be transferred from free cash for the purpose of paying the following unpaid bills. Department of Public Works, Global Montello Group Fuel, $3,472.48. Global Montello Group Fuel, $3,030.97. Global Montello Group Fuel, $6,081.13. Planning Board, Hometown Weekly Legal Ad, $192. Treasurer, Comstar Ambulance Billing, $369.67. Kirkwood Direct Billing Postage, $1,910.48. Kirkwood Direct Billing Postage, $57.82.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Boudreau. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. So, this is going to authorize us to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years. Now, since it involves a prior fiscal year, it involves a four-fifths vote, an 80% vote. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay. Let's move to a vote, then. If you're in favor of this motion, press 1 for yes. Opposed, press 2 for no. You may Motion carries 202 to 9, which is more than 80%. Okay. Article Fourteen was dismissed, so we'll move to Article Fifteen, which is on page 35 of the Blue Book, dealing with amending revolving fund for the Board of Health. Mr. Howard.
Mr. Moderator.
I'm already speaking to the mic. You have to get really close to it.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section 5-16 finances of the general bylaws of the town of Dover, as printed in the warrant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Azvedo has seconded. Thank you. Would you like to explain just very briefly what's involved with this?
This is allowing...
I'm speaking to the mic.
This article will allow the Board of Health to take fees and charges received from the operation of their immunization program and use... the operation of their immunization program and use those to further fund their vaccination clinics. This does not affect the town budget. Funds will come in to the revolving fund and go out from the revolving fund.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, this is a majority vote. All in favor, you'll press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. Motion carries 188 to 16. Okay, Article 16, page 35 to 36 of the Blue Book, to establish and authorize amounts for a revolving fund for the Cemetery Commission. Ms. Green.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section 5-16 finances of the general bylaws of the Town of Dover as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Azaveto. Okay, Woody, just very briefly, what's involved with this?
Similar to the preceding article, this establishes a revolving fund to take fees and charges received from weekend services, burials at the cemetery, and allows the Cemetery Commission to use those fees and charges to pay for weekend services and other expenses.
Okay, does it involve an increase in the budget?
It does not affect the budget. The money comes into the revolving fund and goes out from the revolving fund.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion on this matter? Okay, let's move to a vote on this motion. If you're in favor, press one for yes. If opposed, press two for no. Motion carries 197 to five. Article 17, page 36, to establish and authorize amounts for a revolving fund for the stormwater tree mitigation. Ms. Boudreau.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section 5-16 finances of the general bylaws of the Town of Dover as printed in the warrant.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Again, Woody, just a very brief explanation.
A third revolving fund, this time serving for stormwater tree mitigation, fees and mitigation payments under the stormwater management program can be used for planting and maintenance of trees and other stormwater regulatory compliance. This, again, does not affect the town budget. Funds come into the revolving fund and go out from the revolving fund.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any discussion or questions on this motion? Okay, if you're in favor of the motion, you'll press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. Motion carries 197 to seven. Okay, now we're going to move to Article 19, which is page 37 of... Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I skipped over one. Article 18, page 37, appropriation for one-time project fire department operational assessment. So again, Article 18, page 37. Ms. Kenny.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $40,000 for a fire department operational assessment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kenny. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. I'd like to call upon the chief to briefly explain the reason for this motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Wright, Interfire Chief. The primary intent goal of this project is to determine whether the existing organizational structure, including the levels of staffing, facilities, equipment, and deployment of resources, are adequate to provide a level of service within the Dover Fire Department that is generally within accepted standards and benchmarks utilized by comparable fire departments in similar communities, and based on standards and best practices for modern-day fire services currently in practice in Massachusetts and the U.S. As you probably know, the Fire Department is comprised of all part-time personnel, on-call, fire, and EMTs to provide service to the community. It's become more increasingly difficult to find people that have time available in order to, you know, protect you out there in the community. So we're looking to see whether or not there's other ways that we can do our job better, and this study should help us to determine what avenues we can look at to help improve service within the community.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, let's move to a vote on the motion. Again, if you're in favor of this budget of $40,000 for an assessment, you'll be pressing one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. Motion, which is a majority vote, carries 171 to 28. Okay, Article 19, page 37, amend zoning bylaws dealing with modification to floodplain district. Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw by updating Section 185-44 floodplain district as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Ms. Lisbon, Carol, do you want to say a few words about this?
So several years ago, FEMA changed the rules and regulations to ensure that those properties in Massachusetts, and specifically, obviously, for us in Dover, meet the requirements to get a federal flood insurance. So that bylaw was approved back in 2023 at town meeting. At the time, FEMA had not yet done new maps, which they were doing to address changes in rainfall and climate impact. And those maps finally came out. So this is really administrative change to change our bylaw to add the effective date of the new maps, which will be July of 2025, and to change a couple of addresses of state organizations that need to be involved in this. So if this gets approved, then those residents in town who have property in the floodplain areas will be able to get flood insurance through the federal program. If it's not approved, they will not be eligible for insurance through that program.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions or comments? Okay, this is a zoning bylaw change, so it requires a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll be pressing one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. Motion carries 188 to nine. Okay, Article 20, page 38, also an amendment to the zoning bylaw to clarify administrative edits. Ms. Green.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw as shown in the document on file in the office of the town clerk.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Azaveto, for the second. Okay, Ms. Lisbon, as Chair of the Plane Board, would you like to tell us about this motion?
Sure. This also is very administrative. The building department, the building inspectors sort of keep track of issues that come up as they're looking at applications submitted by residents in Dover. And to the extent that we can amend the bylaw to make it easier for Dover residents to understand our bylaws, this is what this article is all about. They're just a couple of footnotes and clarifications, so that when a resident or contractor looks at our bylaws, they are made aware of some interrelationships within the bylaws. There's no substantive change at all in the building code or the building bylaw itself. And this will require a two-thirds vote, because this is a zoning bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Lisbon. Any questions or comments? Okay, let's move to a vote on this motion. Again, if you're in favor, press one for yes. Opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. And it's a two-thirds vote. Motion carries 193 to six, which is more than two-thirds. Article 21, page 38, amend the zoning bylaw, modification to accessory dwelling units. Mr. Baumann.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Section 185-43 accessory dwelling units of the zoning bylaw as shown in the document on file in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green, for the second. Again, Carol.
Could we have the next slide, please? So accessory dwelling unit, we also call them ADUs. Just as a refresher of what an ADU is, it's a residential living unit. It contains a kitchen, sanitary facilities, and sleeping. It can either be attached to a current primary residence or within the primary residence, or it can be detached, meaning it's in a different building, either standalone or above a garage, which is common in Dover. Next slide, please. These are just some pictures of what was approved back in 2023 at town meeting, when we amended the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Next slide, please. So we've had an ADU bylaw since 1986. Town meeting approved major changes to it in 2023. And then, in the summer of 2024, the Massachusetts Legislature passed the Affordable Homes Act, which impacted the ADU regulations at the state level. And since state law takes precedence over local law, this article changes our Dover bylaw to match the state bylaw. Now, the state bylaw actually went into effect, effective in February of this year. So the ADU applications that have come before the planning board, we have been looking at using the new state law. So this will just make the Dover bylaw and the state bylaw match. It will make it easier for state, local residents to make sure, as they start their planning, that they're not being misled by a local bylaw that is out of sync with the state bylaw. Next slide, please. So the changes that were made by the AHA, the Affordable Homes Act, the three main changes that impact Dover's bylaw is that a detached ADU is no longer processed through a special permit process. It will just go through the site plan review at the planning board like an attached ADU does. Our current bylaw says that either the primary residence or the ADU needs to be occupied by the property owner. That is being removed, so that neither the primary nor the ADU needs to be occupied now by the primary, by the owner. And we had a paragraph in there about some subjective design guidelines for an ADU, and those two need to be removed. Next slide. So this, even though it's a zoning bylaw, it has to pass only by 50%, and passage will allow our Dover bylaw to be in compliance with the state bylaw. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lisbon. Any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, as Carol stated, this is different from most other zoning bylaw amendments, because it only requires a majority vote. Let's move to a vote. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll be pressing one for yes. If you're opposed, you'll be pressing two for no. Motion carries 184 to 20. Okay, Article 22, which is on page 38 of the Blue Book. Ms. Azaveto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Section 185-36 site plan review of the zoning bylaw as set forth in the warrant.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Carol, you're doing yeoman's duty here.
Okay, great. I'm not getting my steps in tonight. Chris, next slide, thank you. There we go, thank you. We currently have a site plan review bylaw as part of our zoning bylaw. It's 185-36. It states that once the planning board receives a complete application, we have 30 days in which to opine and issue a decision. If we do not make a decision within the 30 days, and the applicant does not agree to an extension, then the application is considered accepted, which doesn't allow us to add any conditions if necessary. So given the fact that we meet only every two weeks, and we need to make sure that the application is complete, we're asking you tonight to change the bylaw to give us 60 days in which to review all site plan reviews. And these are site plan reviews that go from small rental stores, banks, restaurants, medical offices, ADUs, solar array, the ground-mounted solar arrays we approved at town meeting last year, parking areas, and all the accessory uses. Next slide, please. So as a zoning bylaw, this will require a two-third vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lisbon. Any comments or questions? Yes, sir, if you'd like to approach the microphone. Name and address, sir.
Hi, I'm Mike Savage, Circle Drive. I've had the pleasure of participating or watching the planning board meetings for over a year, sometimes live, sometimes on Zoom calls. Carol, a couple of times has reviewed the background to this request, and it turns out that very few times it's required or needed to have more than 30 days. Sometimes the site plan application is not complete. Sometimes the applicant agrees voluntarily to extend it. And I happen to believe that giving this 60-day extension will likely cause other applications just to extend and add unnecessary time. In my experience, when you give someone an extension to complete a task, pay a bill, they often take the full extension. Lastly, Carol's made it clear previously that in the next 12 months, before next year's town meeting, they're going to review and modernize, or attempt to modernize, many of the planning board-related bylaws. And it would seem to me that a better time to assess this 60-day idea is after we've had a chance to see how the new, modernized bylaws, as they pertain to the planning board, are working. So I would ask that you consider voting no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is a two... Yes, sir, come on down. Name and address, sir.
Jonathan Fryer, Haven Street. I am likewise opposed to this extension. I don't believe the planning board needs this time. The bylaw is a mess. They spend too much time talking about everything, and they have more than enough time now. Right now...
She wants rebuttal time, which I'm going to give her. Go ahead, Mr. Fryer.
Certainly. I've got a question for you, anyway. Right now, if you file a plan to have your property divided, the planning board has 21 days to act on that plan. If you want to build a pool house, they now have 30 days, they want 60. If you want to build a 20-lot subdivision, you only have 90 days. So the fact that the planning board can do a subdivision in 90 days, and they can't handle a pool house in 30 days, is ridiculous. I have a question, because the bylaw is confusing. And you say we have 30 days now. When does that 30 days start?
Pass the mic.
It starts when the planning board deems that the application is complete. It starts when the planning board deems that the application is complete.
Okay.
I know, but I like to be close. Plus, I don't want to be the only guy.
Jonathan, you've got two minutes. Let's move. Come on.
You're not counting her response, I hope.
No, but we're counting yours, so please proceed.
All right. So if you file a subdivision and you want to build 20 house lots, the 90 days starts the day you file the application, not when it's complete. That's what the 90 days is for, for the planning board to look at it and say, we need this, we need that. But for your pool house, your 30 days doesn't even start until they deem it's complete. So you file your plan, the time doesn't start, go to the planning board, they look at it. If they don't do anything on the next meeting, you could go another month before they even deem it's complete.
30 seconds.
You could be a month, two months in before they deem it complete, and the 30 days starts. And if it's complete for your pool house, they ought to be able to answer the questions in 30 days. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer. Rebuttal, Ms. Lisbon.
So this bylaw does not address the issues that you're going to be discussing in Article 28, which are the accessory uses in a residential district like pools, cabanas, barns, and garages. This applies to every single site plan we review. So for instance, the fuel storage site plan review that was done for the highway garage started in September and then ended up with two meetings in January. So it took about five months. It was a very complex situation. It required the consultant that was hired by the town to go back and do some more research. It required that the conservation commission take another look at the site plan review and determine if, in fact, the natural resources and the safety issues involved were going to be sufficient for the wetlands. There were only about three feet from the 100-yard setback. It required us to do a site visit. And by the time we got to the final review and decision, there were well over 15 different conditions put on the site plan. We could not have done that in 13 days, or 30 days, sorry. So yes, pools are a lot easier. You'll be addressing those a little bit later tonight. This has to do with every single thing that we do for site plan reviews, including, for instance, the site plan review we did with the community center, which, as you can imagine, was much more complex as well. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Fryer, one more. Let's go. Clock is ticking. Go ahead, come on. Let's go. We have a lot to cover tonight, sir.
All right. So on your site plan for the highway department, you've talked about sideline setbacks. Do you have authority to approve those?
Setbacks and dimensional requirements are in the bylaw.
Jonathan.
Well, we don't change, we can't change a setback. Those are by, within the bylaw, and the responsibility of the building department to determine, when the building department is looking at the application, that all the setbacks and lot coverage dimensional requirements have been approved. Are we getting to this debate?
No, we're not. One more question to wrap it up, Fryer, okay? Not yet. Let him go and then...
I think the point is that a lot of the things you're reviewing, you don't need to review. You don't have the authority to change. You don't have authority over the setbacks. So if you're reviewing those, you're wasting your own time. And after this site plan review, can they go ahead and build their new gas pumps? And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
Specific to the fuel depot, because it's in the open district, our bylaw, Jonathan, states that the planning board actually gives a recommendation to Board of Selectmen, and it's the Board of Selectmen that has final authority on building within the open district.
Name and address, please, sir.
Kevin Mann, 7 Pleasant Street. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, motion has been made to move the question. Do I hear a second? Okay, motion has been made to move the question and has been seconded. We have to move directly to a vote on the motion to move the question. So on my signal, if you are in favor of moving the question, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Okay, motion carries. So now we have to move directly to a vote on this motion to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 22, page 38, and this is a two-thirds vote. We cannot have any further discussion. On my signal, if you're in favor of the motion, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Okay, motion does not carry. Did not reach the requisite two-thirds. 101 to 97. Okay, Article 23, page 39, trail easements. Ms. Boudreau.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a deed or deeds of easement interests for the easements listed in the warrant on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine and in final locations as the Board of Selectmen may determine.
Thank you, Ms. Boudreau. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mrs. Sutwick, would you like to make a presentation on this article?
Thank you. Can you pull the slides, please? Next one. Okay, the last article for the planning board is Article 23 regarding easements. Easements grant the town the right to use portions of private property for trail access, many times connecting to our town's many green spaces. Allowed uses range from general hiking and biking to bridle path only. Some are open to the general public while others are restricted to Dover residents or by permission only. The easements are proposed to be accepted at town meeting as a matter of clerical completion. A yes vote would ensure only a town meeting vote could extinguish the easement rather than the planning board, thereby better protecting the easement. This change does not impact the standing or legality of the easement. Next slide, please. All right, there's two easements up for acceptance. The first is Barque Estates. This affects 6 Hartford Street, 16 Craw Drive, and 17 Craw Drive. The easement offers access for those on Hartford Street, Craw Drive, and Stonegate Lane to the June Playground in Westwood. The easement allows for hiking, horseback riding, and cross-country skiing. Next slide, please. The second easement is for Wilson's Way. This affects 1, 3, 5, and 8 Wilson's Way. There are two easement trails. The first is an equestrian-only trail there on the map in red. That affects 1, 3, and 5 Wilson's Way and gives access to Sage Farm and others to connect to other trails and green spaces. The second is a general recreational use easement in pink. That impacts 5 and 8 Wilson's Way, and that's for walking, running, hiking, and cross-country skiing in addition to equestrian use. Next slide, please. Okay, so this passes with 50%. Regardless of yes or no vote, all easements remain legally in place as they are. We are only voting on the matter of extinguishment should that be requested. A yes vote means town vote, town meeting will be required to extinguish easements in the future, but no would mean the planning board will have the authority to extinguish easements in the future as they do now. That's it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, let's move to a vote on this. This is a majority vote. Again, Article 23, page 39. If you're in favor of the motion, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries 167 to 31. Okay, Article 24, page 40 of the Blue Book. Mr. Howard.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 54B.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howard. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Okay, motion has been made that we accept the provisions dealing with the prudent investor rule. Mr. Havlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Get it closer. Go ahead.
I'll still say, all right, there we go. About two years ago, the Board of Selectmen formed a working group to look at our investment policies, procedures, and vendors. By law, our treasurer collector, Joanne Russo, is responsible for investing all town funds, including our trust funds. Dover has several large trusts, including the Hovey Fund, the Library, the Larrabee Whiting Estates, and for the cemetery. Without this prudent man bylaw, all trust funds must be invested in a list of extremely short, low-risk, and typically low-return investments. This can create a big mismatch with longer-term, more growth-oriented objectives of the trustees and the beneficiaries of the trust. This article allowed the treasurer collector to better match these objectives with more appropriate investments, such as the S&amp;P 500 and similar index-based funds or ETFs. This only applies to Dover's trust funds, and as the name implies, still must be done in a prudent manner, working with the trustees. That's all this is. So the Selectmen encourage you to vote yes on this article.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, let's move to a vote on this article. If you're in favor of adopting an prudent investor rule, please press one. If you're opposed, press two. You may vote now. It's a majority vote. Motion carries 183 to 11. Okay, Article 25, which is also on page 40 of the Blue Book. Ms. McCormick.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22I.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions about... Is Charlie here? Charlie Long? Charlie, do you want to just briefly talk about what this does?
This article, this article and the next article both provide cost of living increases for veterans exemptions from taxes. The actual cost effect to the town is completely minimal.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion on this motion? Okay, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, press one for yes on my signal. Press two if you're opposed. You may vote now. Motion carries 185 to 2. Article 26, also on page 40 of the Blue Book. Ms. McCormick.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22J.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Okay, Charlie's already explained what this does. Are there any other questions or comments on this motion? Okay, let's move to a vote on Article 26. If you're in favor, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries 179 to 3. Okay, Article 27 on page 41 of the Blue Book. Ms. Kenny.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Chapter 116 of general bylaws of the town of Dover as set forth in the warrant.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kenny. Thank you for the second, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Havlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Back in the early 1990s, the town created three groundwater protection districts. Two of these prohibit large fuel storage and some waste fuel storage with exceptions for household use. At the May 1993 annual town meeting, Dover adopted this bylaw. It appears, looking back, that this was intended to be a zoning bylaw change, but it was voted as a general bylaw. The difference? Zoning bylaws automatically grandfather pre-existing uses, whereas general bylaws do not. In 1993, the sponsors seem to have forgotten to include pre-existing conditions, including Dover Mobile, our Department of Public Works, and likely Dover Automotive. We can find no mention that this was the intent, and thus we need this to correct the situation on discovery. This article only allows the three aforementioned locations to be grandfathered due to this administrative oversight. The Board of Selectmen encourage you to vote yes on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Havlin. Are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, this requires, as I see, okay, this requires a majority vote. If you're in favor of the motion, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries 174 to 10. Article 28, page 41, amend scheduled use tables. Mr. Bowman.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Chapter 185 of the general bylaws of the town of Dover as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiss. This is a citizen's petition, being sponsored by Mr. Here, and Mr. Here is first going to make an amendment to that motion because he's narrowing the scope of his proposal. Mr. Here?
Yes, next slide, please. Tom Here, 15 Park Avenue. Mr. Moderator, I move to that the article be amended to read to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 185 of the general bylaws of the town of Dover to remove the site plan review requirement for accessory use not detrimental to residential neighborhood in single-family residential zoning districts R, R1, and R2. The reason for this amendment is just to simplify the language. Really understand what we're trying to do is limit the removal of site plan to just accessory structures in residential zoning districts.
Okay, so this is an amendment. It will be a majority vote on the amendment. Then when we consider the motion as amended, it will be a two-thirds vote. So this motion is simply the amendment that Mr. Here is proposing, which is on the screen. It's a majority vote. Are there any questions or comments on his proposed amendment? Was there a second for this? A second to Mr. Here's motion? Okay, I hear a second. Okay, let's move to a vote then, if there's no discussion. If you're in favor of this motion to amend, you'll press one for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press two for no. You may vote now. Okay, the motion to amend carries. So now we'll move to a consideration of this motion as amended, and for it to be approved as a zoning bylaw change is going to require a two-thirds vote. Mr. Here?
Okay, can I have the slides back? We'll leave it on the last side for a second. So as I stated, what I'm hearing is to recommend that we amend our bylaws to remove the planning board's site plan review requirement for accessory buildings in residential zoning districts. Since moving to Dover in 1999, my wife and I have done a number of projects requiring building permits, and the process has been pretty much the same for projects, big and small, and it was relatively straightforward, managed well by the building department, and bringing in the other departments as necessary, whether it's the Board of Health, Concom, or the town engineer. Late last year, I was surprised to learn in applying for a new building permit that the planning board had recently begun to require preliminary site plan reviews for accessory structures in all zoning districts, including residential areas, as a prerequisite to starting the building permit application process. A clear, from my experience, a clear departure from what had past practices had been. So while planning boards' responsibilities are not definitively defined or delineated in state law, in most towns, planning boards are established to, among other things, evaluate impacts of new buildings, developments, new streets, relative to public health and safety, traffic patterns... traffic patterns, parking drainage, things that Carol mentioned earlier in one of the other articles, what they do. Planning boards cannot enforce or waive zoning bylaws. An approval by the planning board is not the same as a waiver of other zoning requirements. That's the building department and ultimately ZBA, if there's a difference. They have no authority over safe drinking and wastewater. That's the health department. Stormwater runoff, that's really town engineer, and wetlands is the conservation committee. So, those things are covered by other departments. So, the objective of this article is relatively straightforward. Remove the planning board's site plan review requirement as it pertains to accessory uses buildings, such as pools, poolhouses, cabanas, detached garages, barns, stables in residential zoning districts only. So, let's take a look at where we are right now, the current state of things. The next slide, please. So, what is within the planning board's purview? Obviously, new subdivisions, plantings for new streets and effect on traffic. Next slide, commercial buildings. Again, traffic is a consideration, parking, lighting, things like that, signage. Next slide, municipal buildings. This all makes sense, where there's a lot of people gathering, potentially affecting others in the town. Next slide, cemeteries, fine. Next slide, churches, public meeting places. Yep, that makes all the sense in the world. Schools, high traffic, huge public safety concerns, absolutely makes sense for a site plan review. And then, not-for-profit clubs are also covered in site plan review requirement. That's fine. So, they have plenty of work to do. So, on the flip side, what is, what does a planning board not get involved with? What's outside their purview? New single-family dwellings, constructions, or additions to existing homes, including, for example, an attached garage or attached weight room, do not involve the planning board's site plan review in any way whatsoever. Next slide. So, the question is, what do we do with these accessory structures in a residential area that are pertinent to the dwelling, the house that's there? So, pool, poolhouses, detached garages, barns, sheds, and the like? Should that, is it appropriate for the planning board to have purview and require site plan involvement? All right, next slide. I don't think so. Why? Why is that? Well, the current review period is 30 days. We just heard that the planning board asked for additional 30 days, and it just creates a lot of delay, certainly my experience. Next slide. Adds cost. Perhaps not a lot in a relevant scheme of things, but as an example, for a $100,000 project, the building permit process alone is going to cost anywhere from $1,150 to more if there's other concerns from Concom and other things like that. And the planning board's site plan review is $500. Not insignificant, and also, perhaps adds cost in terms of engineers and architects, attorneys, they might have to take part in the site plan review. Next slide. Ultimately, it's a duplication of effort, right? We have experts, town employees, that we've hired for their expertise, they're professionals, and understand what they're doing. Why don't we trust the professionals that we've hired to do their jobs to do their jobs? Next slide. Lastly, as we saw, they were asking for an additional 30 days to review, among other things, accessory unit site plans. To me, that tells me that there's just not enough time in the day to do all this stuff. So, why don't we take this off their agenda? Take this off the menu and give them time back to focus on the more complex projects, the bigger projects, and design the zoning that they're going to look at changing this coming year. Okay, next slide. So, Dover has always prided itself on being frugal and efficient with our tax dollars. We spend money where it makes sense. We make our fire trucks last for 35 years before we ask for a new one. Our roads are enviable, better than all the other towns around us. And we do that because we spend time and money where it makes sense, the schools, the roads, public safety, and such. Site plan reviews of residential, waste taxpayer, and town resources cause undue delays and robust, undue delays and already robust building permitting process. The fact is that Dover is unique in this respect. No other towns have a blanket 100% requirement for accessory buildings to be, have a site plan review by the planning department. Some towns do have very specific applications of site plan review, to the extent it's a village ovalay zoning area or scenic roads. They will require that those stay, require planning board review in order to maintain the look and feel of a town. Those, that all makes sense. We-
30 seconds.
Got it. Okay. I don't think that we need to have this extra step in the process and duplicate all the reviews that are already taking place. So, I hope you can see that, you can appreciate this relatively minor change, almost an edit to our bylaw will create benefits to the town and to our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And responding for the planning board, Val Lynn. Tom, you can sit down. Mr. Here, you can just, why don't you grab a seat?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Val Lynn. I live at 14 Haven Terrace, and I'm a planning board member. I'm speaking here on behalf of the Dover Planning Board in opposition to Article 28. Given that I have about eight minutes, I'm going to get right to the point. Next slide. We ask that you please vote no tonight on Article 28 for three key reasons. The first is that the planning board has already identified the site plan review process as something that we wanted to update back in 2023. We had sent out a proposal, an RFP for a consultant. Unfortunately, the consultants were not available and didn't have the capacity to assist us at that time. So, we worked on some other time-sensitive bylaws and are now ready to address the site plan review process again. We have put it into our fiscal year for 2026. We've allocated the funds and the time that we need to do this process. So, it is one of our top priorities, and we anticipate that we will be able to address many of the concerns that have been raised this evening. A second reason is that we are asking you to vote no on 28 is because our town, as I mentioned earlier, is on the cusp of implementing a badly needed online permitting system. Our current permitting system is disjointed and still a bit paper-based, so we are thrilled about the potential for the online system to provide tremendous improvements in communication, transparency, and data-tracking abilities for the permitting process. This benefits the site plan review process because the planning board relies on a lot of the permitting, communication, and data to provide, to enable us to have a comprehensive discussion about construction projects during our public hearings. Next slide, please. So, these two initiatives, the update on the site plan review bylaw and the new online permitting system have the ability to address many of the concerns raised this evening. And we ask that rather than tossing out the process, that we, that the community allow us to have the opportunity to update and revise the process, and then, we will bring that back to the town meeting in 2026 for a vote. But there's a third reason that I think many people here this evening should want to keep this process in place, and that is because the site plan review includes abutters in the hearing process and allows you to be a part of what is happening in your neighborhood and allows you to voice concerns for the impact of those projects. This inclusion of your voice is a key differentiator between the standard building permit process and the site plan review process. I will spend a few minutes now talking about why we think your voice should matter. Some of you may be wondering what a site plan review is, and so, I'll briefly kind of go through a summary of what we do. The purpose of the site plan is to look at a project and determine if it has a negative impact on the surroundings or the public, with the intent of maintaining harmony. It is a common municipal process. It has some unique criteria based on the town that you're in, and it is largely guided by case law. So, the site plan review generally does not allow the planning board to deny a project. It only allows us to either accept it with, accept it as submitted, or accept it with reasonable conditions. And those reasonable conditions are intended to mitigate anticipated impacts on the health, safety, and the well-being of the surroundings or the broader community. We have about 10 criteria. They're summarized in the four bullets on the bottom of this slide, and those are the things that guide us in our decision. Structures, I think that, as has been mentioned, some structures that commonly fall within the accessory use category, which is what we're talking about tonight, includes pools, pool cabanas, sheds, garages, and such. We work with the applicants, and if issues are identified, we determine mutually agreeable solutions, and we also encourage discussions between applicants and abutters so that solutions work for everyone. The benefit here is for all parties involved. It is a proactive approach to identify issues early in the planning process so that it doesn't deteriorate into frustration between neighbors or costly changes for applicants after construction has begun. So, a couple examples of reasonable conditions that have occurred in Dover in some of the site plan reviews that we've completed had to do with a pool and a sport court that was proposed, and there was lighting involved, and that lighting was facing an abutting property. So, that was brought to the attention of the planning board. We discussed it with the owner, and the lighting was moved, and so, that solution was resolved. That is something that the building inspector would not have the ability to do because the building inspector is limited to the codes and the bylaws in our town. They can't necessarily work with the applicants when there's problems identified in the surrounding areas. There's another project that involved a garage and an extension of a driveway, and it was a driveway that was quite close to the property line in the abutting property. So, we worked there with the applicant to provide some screening so that dirt, debris, water runoff, and privacy issues were addressed. Again, we have found that most applicants are very agreeable and willing to work with us on these conditions that are aimed at remedying legitimate concerns. Next slide, please. So, one of the concerns tonight is overlap between the planning board and other departments. It is true that there is some overlap aspects with the site plan review, and how we address those is we defer to the professionals within a given department. In fact, we have lots of conversations and ask for lots of input from different departments. But I want to bring your attention to the right side of the screen, which has two critically important factors about the site plan review, which are the ability to notify abutters, that's all of you, about a project in your area, and consider the impact of that project on the surroundings. Both of these features give you the ability to be a voice in this process, which would not occur if the site plan process was not in place. Going back to the example of the sport court, again, the site plan review has the ability to talk with the abutters, get their perspective about how they may be impacted, and be able to work with the applicant to find reasonable solutions. And again, this is not asking people to change the color of a shed or the stone used on their patio. This is about providing with screening, maybe some lighting adjustments, and very reasonable things. Next slide, please. So, this is a process that kind of shows when an application comes to the planning board, the amount of time that it takes and the different interactions that are happening. The vast majority of our accessory use reviews get through the process within 30 days. When there are issues, they happen, they generally happen during the time that the application is submitted. There may be some missing materials, and then, if there's any questions, that we need to rely on other departments to provide us with some input. Overall, we believe that the implementation of the online permitting system should largely address any of these current delays and improve the efficiency of the process.
Wrap it up, please.
Okay. Next slide, and let's skip to the next slide, please. Great. In summary, some may think that a pool or a detached garage is too small or insignificant to be burdened with this additional process. That might have been true at one time, but today, there are accessory buildings that are twice the size of the homes on a lot, or accessory buildings that require 1,000 gallons of propane to run them. Just like homes, many of the accessory structures are getting more sophisticated and larger. Being aware of what is happening around you is a good thing, and voting no on Article 28 tonight preserves your ability to remain a part of the process and gives the planning board the opportunity to make improvements over the coming year. Next slide.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you for your attention.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Yes, ma'am, would you like to come up here? Name and address, Justine.
Yeah, hi, I'm Justine Gertam, 23, Haven Street. It's funny, I've lived here a long time. I've been going to a lot of planning board meetings, a lot of ZBA meetings over the years. I joke that Haven Street is sort of a transitional neighborhood in that we are in residential R, R1, and later on, up the street, in R2. What concerns me about 28, and I ask you to vote no against the developers that are proposing this law, is to get the planning board out of their hairs. And all I can say is that more and more developments and buildings that are residential are being bought by LLCs. The uses are not in what I view as traditional commercial, I mean, residential uses. They're often quote-unquote "commercial" in nature. Instead of a two-car garage, you might have a 10- or 15-car garage, as happened, at least in our, is happening in our neighborhood. You also have concerns with lighting. You also have pickleball courts going up that are bothering. The hours of operation are not stated, whereas, if the site plan review process is beefed up under the planning board, there will be hours of operation so that the abutters do not have to yell over their cocktails trying to talk because people are making noises.
30 seconds.
Because, and I will say, Mr. Here, you showed municipal projects, they do have the public, but you don't know about it unless you're notified as an abutter for a private residential project. So, I urge you to vote, give the planning board more power, do not vote for Number 28, and let the planning board do a good job next year bringing back more full-scale site plan review. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir. Name and address, Mr. Gernan.
Hi, my name's Fred Gernan. I'm 17 on Meadow Road. I'm a professional architect. I'm a little confused why we're talking about a residential R1 unit with a planning board. That just doesn't happen. I don't know how they have managed to get into that area. I understand Justine's problems. It happens. People take things differently, but I can't remember exactly what the Dover amendment says, but it has something to do with the fact that private residences are exempt from a whole bunch of things. And I'm just sort of concerned that a planning board, which is going to cost another $500, another 30 to 60 days, depending on continuation because of what's needed, right? It'll just delay a project, but that really, for me, doesn't really matter because I have to happen, that goes all along, it happens to me all the time when we're doing these work, the work we do, I used to do. So, I just am concerned that this is an odd thing because pretty soon, they're going to tell you, can't take down any trees, which is something that came up a year ago. Whole bunch of other little things are happening, and I thought you owned the property, and it was in the zoning area. As long as you're in the zoning setbacks, you can basically do what you want, except maybe-
30 seconds.
-the problem about getting access for a vehicle. Oh, and also, the town should go ahead and put in the zoning the fact that everybody is supposed to have house shields on their lights, because I hate LED lights. Electricians put them up, and they don't realize how bright they are. So, if you want to get rid of a problem with people's lights in town, get a zoning ordinance up that everybody has to put house shields on outside-
Thank you, Mr. Gernan. Ma'am? Yep, coming down. Yep, coming down. Name and address, please.
My name is Julie Bernstein. I live at Two Oaks Circle. And while I do understand how homeowners are very concerned about extending the review because I have a neighbor who, in our little wetlands area, took him months to get approved just to elevate another story onto his house, and that seemed like unnecessarily long time. On the other hand, right across from me, a developer swept in, bought a house, immediately started tearing down trees and really changing profoundly, again, this is part of a wetland, the landscape and our privacy with respect to this new house that was put in. And then we, subsequent to this, after this already occurred, received the notice saying, asking for our approval for it. If anything, I think that there needs to be a much more careful, I don't know, maybe audit of what's going on because frankly, I think that we should have had some consideration about this. And yet I also understand other people's concerns, that they want to get going on a project, and it's taking far longer than they feel that it needs to. But I certainly would not vote to accelerate the process because I think if anything, that's just going to lead to a lot more damaging changes.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address.
Mike Savage, Circle Drive. Just a quick clarification from what Justine said. The citizen who is sponsoring this article, I believe, is not a developer. He's a 25-year resident of the town, as am I. Just a quick reminder to everybody that the projects that come before the planning board already meet building codes, setbacks, and all the other bylaws. They've already been approved. I mean, not approved, but they've already passed those other common tests. I'd also mention, I don't want to repeat things that have been mentioned before, that we are one of perhaps three towns in this state that has site plan reviews of this nature. I happen to believe the idea of getting neighbor input is a good idea. However, with the inconsistencies we have in this process, specifically the fact that someone can build a 5,000 or 7,000-square-foot house next door to you, and you won't know what's happening until construction crews show up, or you can build a very large garage if it's attached to the house, again, without any notice, I think creates a misuse of time and an unreasonable expectation. What's happened is that neighbors and the property owner or homeowner come together, and all sorts of allegations are lobbied in one direction or the other. And I can tell you from observing these meetings, several of which do seem to sail through the process just fine, but there have been several in the last 12 months or so that haven't.
Thirty seconds.
Neither the homeowner nor the neighbors leave the meeting happy. Last comment really quickly. The planning board asked the building inspector to offer his opinion, and his quote was, "Site plan review of this nature is the pinnacle of overregulation." I'm sorry that letter wasn't made public, but that's a direct quote from the town building inspector. I'd ask that you vote in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we're ready to move to a vote then. So this requires a two-thirds vote because it's amending the zoning bylaw. If you're in favor of Mr. Here's proposal, you'll be pressing 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll be pressing 2 for no. Motion does not carry. Okay, now we're going to Article 29, page 41. Mr. Bowman?
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 29 be dismissed.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. The proponent of this article was a citizen but has asked that it be dismissed. So the motion is simply to dismiss it. It requires a separate vote. We couldn't put it together with the other motions that we dismiss because it's a citizen's petition. Is there any discussion on this citizen's request that we dismiss the article? Okay, let's move to a vote then. If you're in favor of dismissing the article, you'll press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no. Okay, motion carries, 162 to 5. Article 30, page 42, design sidewalk on Cross Street. Ms. Azavito.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash a sum of $22,350.25 to design a sidewalk on Cross Street from the intersections of Cross Street and Center Street to Chicaring Elementary School.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiss. Okay, this is a citizen's proposal by Rick Garen. Mr. Garen, the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm going to try to make this quick. Let's go right to Slide 3. I was here a couple of years ago and last year, simply looking for a sidewalk between Chicaring Elementary and Center Street. It's important we ensure our young children are safe going to and from school. The warrant committee believes the proposed sidewalk will not provide safe passage for all children in the neighborhood. The children in the neighborhood who do not travel this 600 feet of Cross Street are not impacted by the safety issues caused by the exclusive bus travel and bidirectional traffic flow during drop-off and pickup at Chicaring Elementary, just addressing that specific area. To further address the warrant committee's comments, reviewing safety concerns around our school should be something all towns should take into consideration on a regular basis. It should not take an action brought by private citizens to address safety concerns. This article affords a town the freedom to design a sidewalk within the framework of existing town goals and safety guidelines. This article involves a particular area of Cross Street to address safe passage for all children between Chicaring Elementary and the Center Street sidewalk. This short stretch of sidewalk is specifically needed during drop-off and pickup when bidirectional traffic is most active and impossible to provide the four feet of safe passing distance required by Massachusetts VRU law, which is Vulnerable Road Use Law that was passed two years ago. This roughly 600 feet of Cross Street is the primary and exclusive route for all bus traffic in and out of the school. The danger and safety issues are most prevalent when Chicaring is welcoming and dismissing students. The Vulnerable Road Use Law is straightforward. You must provide four feet of space to pass a pedestrian. The bidirectional traffic is consistent. Buses exclusively travel this area of Cross Street while children walk in the same 600-foot stretch. A simple safety issue with a simple solution. Here is one example. On Wednesday half-days, when Chicaring are released from school at 11:15, they are walking to town. And if you have seen children walking in clusters, they don't appear to be too concerned at what's around them. They just go out of school. They just got out of school. They're excited for their freedom and independence. They laugh and share conversations while looking at one another. Some are off to the library, some are going to the market, and others to various center destinations. Our children should be able to walk to the center of town free from danger. As a town, we are obliged to provide safe walking spaces for them. Not taking action on this will be the third year in a row the Vulnerable Road Use Law has been in place. Bus and other traffic remains consistent, and children are still in harm's way. A week ago today, an elementary child was killed going home from school in Boston. This may be a rare incident, but the risk is still there. A mailbox can be moved, trees can be planted, and fences can be replaced, but the life of a loved one can't be replaced. It's such a small ask for such a short stretch of roadway. The town owns 40 feet of the lane, and there is plenty of room on town land for a sidewalk. Please vote yes to start the process of providing safe travel in this section of Cross Street for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hunter?
Ms. Smith.
Okay, Mr. Havlin.
Thank you. So this is the third year that Mr. Garen has brought this issue to town meeting, either to study or directly construct a sidewalk on Cross Street, which coincidentally would lead directly to his daycare business. This year, Mr. Garen has focused more on safety concerns, as have other neighbors, which need to be looked at holistically. The Board of Selectmen agrees with the safety concerns need to be looked at and addressed. However, the proposed sidewalk will not address all of these concerns raised and indeed may create other safety issues regarding the Chicaring School itself. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen asks that this article be dismissed with the pledge that a working group will be created with the Board of Selectmen, the DPW, police, fire, the Chicaring School, the planning board, because this is a scenic road, and members of the neighborhood. We'll seek to address these concerns and eliminate or mitigate them to the best of our abilities, but we shouldn't be doing it just by throwing some monies at a study for an issue that, in all likelihood, will not address all these safety concerns. So let's do it right. Let's do it holistically, and we ask that you vote against this article.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Havlin. Mr. Havlin, I need one potential correction. You said you vote to dismiss. Technically, the motion before us, if you're in favor of Mr. Garen's motion, would be a yes. If you're opposed, it would be a no. So are you encouraging people to vote no?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote no.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
In a minute, Mr. Garen, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Garen?
I have a problem.
Okay, sir, come on up.
Can I answer this one?
Sure, if it's working.
Chris Condon.
It's not working. Come on down.
That explains why it's a long...
No. Like... Just kidding.
Chris Condon, 10 Cross Street, resident there since 2002. I have a home office that looks out over the end of my driveway, Cross Street. I sit there, and I watch school buses and cars and kids occasionally. I just, I don't understand why this is the third year in a row. We're talking about a 600-foot section of street in Dover. What about the people that are on the other side of the Chicaring School towards Dedham Street? Are those kids not in danger? So I appreciate the board stepping up and saying, okay, let's look at what we're doing with sidewalks in Dover. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garen, did you want to make another statement briefly, please?
Sure. Yeah, it's true. Fifteen years ago, I chose to join my wife and work at Precious Beginnings Preschool. It's not a big moneymaker for me. I care about these kids. And you might have a home office, but from 15 Center Street, I can see people leave Chicaring and walk the three minutes it takes to round the corner. On several occasions, I've been close to people. Now, I can take the attitude of this particular gentleman and say, why I care about these kids? It's no boon to me if there's a sidewalk there or not financially. It's irresponsible of us to think that we can solve a problem by getting a group of people together to talk about this without... It makes common sense to provide a sidewalk in front of an elementary school. This is the exclusive route for all buses. They don't come on the other side of Cross Street. The bidirectional traffic doesn't flow twice a day like those Walla buses when they come out. And I can tell you, there's been too many close calls. If it's right in front of your house, you can't see it, but from 15 Center Street, I can see it. I believe there are people here who have seen how tricky it is for drivers. Again, you can't provide that four feet that's required by the state. I guess we're going to continue to ignore that law. This isn't about me, this is about the kids. You know what? I don't need to care for this anymore because my fifth grade is going off to sixth grade. I'm going to continue to care. If I have to be back here next year, I will. The town needs to provide safe spaces for kids. This isn't about me making money. This is about the children that walk that small stretch of road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Havlin, okay. Yes, sir. Would you like a microphone brought to you, or?
I... I'll let that over.
John Sullivan, 35, Walpole Street. I've been here all three years watching this go on. And one of, and I wasn't intending to speak tonight, but one of the things that I've noticed is that this isn't really just about kids. This is about our enjoyment of life. We have very few sidewalks in town, and people want to maintain Dover as Dover has been for 100 years or more. The thing we don't have control over is the increase in traffic that has tripled over the last 30 years. So interesting, there are very few places in town where you can actually do a loop, go out and walk, and not have to worry about traffic. This is a place where you don't see kids on Cross Street because no parent in their right mind would allow kids to be on Cross Street. So there's a tautology there that, you know, doesn't make sense. You do see them on Center Street, on the sidewalk. You do see them going into town. You do see them on Dedham Street, on the sidewalk. This is a short stretch, and I think it should be addressed on the other end of Chicaring as well. But I see this not just for kids, but just for people who live in the neighborhood, the ability to walk a circuit and be able to not worry about traffic on a street like that. And the point of school buses twice a day, there may not be many people walking at 7:00 in the morning, but certainly mid-afternoon. So I think, I don't, I see, I certainly hope that this is viewed, if this is turned down, that this is viewed by the planning board and the selectmen in light of being used by all residents, not just elementary school kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Name and address, please.
Amy Collins, 96 Center Street. I know it's late, I'll be really quick. I am 100% in support of sidewalks in town. I walked for years, at least three years, from my Center Street, which has no sidewalk, until we hit Pine Street with my child to Chicaring. They have spent many of half-day Wednesdays going to town, which does not require the sidewalk at all. You go through, they all get to town safely, I promise. We've done a lot. I support sidewalks, but with the rail trail, that will be a whole nother discussion of how do you get to the rail trail then to these schools or whatever it is. So I would say that, I would encourage a no vote on this so the town can actually look holistically at the sidewalks, how the rail trail feeds in, and where they're needed instead of just one here and one there. It really does need to be a holistic approach for everyone on all the streets, and so I would just say no so we can get a better approach.
Thank you. Sir? Come up to the microphone, sir. Well, come up to the microphone, sir, and identify yourself again. I'm sorry, we have to follow protocol.
Steve Lansicki, 11 Cross. I'd like to move the question.
All right, do I hear a second to move the question?
Yes.
Okay, motion to move the question has been made, and it's been seconded, so we'll move directly to a vote on the motion to move the question. If you are in favor of the motion to move the question, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. Okay, motion to move the question carries. So we move immediately to a vote. If you're in favor of Mr. Garen's motion, you'll be voting, pressing 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll be pressing 2 for no. Motion does not carry. Okay, on to Article 31, page 42, transfer from free cash. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $800,000 from free cash to reduce the fiscal year '26 tax rate and authorize the Board of Assessors to use the same to reduce the tax rate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiss. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, for the second. Is there any discussion about this appropriation of $800,000 for free cash? Okay, let's move to a vote then. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press 2 for no. Motion carries, 140, 1, I didn't quite get that.
146 to 4.
146 to 4, thank you. Okay, Mr. Weiss, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to congratulate you. It's 9:58. I move that this annual town meeting be dissolved.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, and I would like to thank all the volunteers who worked so hard for tonight. Thank you very much. We can do this as a voice vote. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and have a good night.